This is Staff October 22nd, 2019. We have two items on the agenda. One is an executive session, but the first one is related to a task force that we are forming around one of the recommendations of the task force that was established a long time ago, related to MSD and the affordability issues related to MSD. And so, one of the recommendations was to take a look at impervious surfaces in the county. Not a small task, but we are moving in the right direction here today. So, I do want to recognize that Holly Christman is with us here on the dais. Jeff Aluto is at a conference and so is not with us. So Holly is here in his stead. Thank you Holly for being here.
Welcome.
So Karen, are you and Holly going to set this up for us?
I'll go ahead and take the steering wheel on this right now. In front of you is a yellow folder that has the information, some of the background information, as well as a little bit of detail of why we're here that I will not get into. But for your own information, you can peruse that later. It really does explain what the purpose of this exercise is with the impervious surface fee structure. So, a little bit of background. Commissioner Drehouse touched on it, but in 2015, the Board commissioned a task force on affordability for the rate structure of MSD. And that task force was to take a look at what we could do to bring about more fairness in the way that the rates are passed along to the rate payers of the district and with the sensitivities of trying to make sure that it's affordable for everyone. And so, that task force got underway. They made recommendations and this Board as a body over the course of the last three years has instituted four of the main changes that were recommended from that task force. This being the fifth remaining task to take on. And it's not a small one. So it's going to be, we're going to need to call upon a lot of different resources to get to the point where we can make a recommendation to you that is sound and will deliver a fair and equitable approach to the rate structure if you choose to change it. So, one of the things, I guess, on September 26th, you passed a resolution instructing county administration to put together, put our heads together and try to figure out what a working group or groups would should look like to get to the point where we can develop a working plan. And so, the outcome of that thought process after that September 26th resolution was simply to have two working groups that actually work together ultimately. So we're going to have a working group of representative agencies, public agencies, who already either administer the impervious surface fee through their structure, stormwater management, both city and county. There's Mill Creek Valley Conservancy District is entertaining moving down the path of a similar type fee for the same type of protections. And so, what we thought we needed to do was to get the staff working group together to see where we have common ground. And to make sure that once we get together with the stakeholder working group, we have a better understanding of what our mission will be and what our expectations can be. So with that, you, one of the pages, the second page, I believe, in your packet has a list of the two working groups and the agencies that will be represented along with the stakeholder groups that we're going to reach out to. You will be acting on a resolution on Thursday this week, the 24th, to solidify these working groups and tasking them to begin this effort. So, I wanted to let you know that we, the administration is very serious about this and understands the importance of making sure that the devil is in the detail and that we work very hard, hand in hand, with the City of Cincinnati, Metropolitan Sewer Department, Hamilton County Stormwater District, and the Mill Creek Valley Conservancy District. So we can put a package together that this whole region can get behind.
I do want to recognize that interim director still? Interim Director of MSD Diana Christie is with us also in attendance. I just have a couple of questions related to the working group membership. Can you walk us through the rationale? Because some of them, like the City of Redding is, I'm curious about that one and some of the other ones. So can you just help us better understand the rationale for the membership?
Sure. So, the rationale for the membership on that again was to bring together the groups that either already do have an impervious surface fee structure for the same or similar activities, or will have a role to play in the administration of a new impervious surface fee structure. And the City of Redding actually has its own stormwater district. So it's a representative of a small community that has their own. And we wanted to include them in the conversation.
Is there anybody in Hamilton County that already does have an impervious surface fee?
Well, both Hamilton County Stormwater District has an impervious surface fee.
Right, unrelated to the stormwater though?
I, other than, no, I'm not aware of one at this point. There may be someone.
Do you?
No, I don't think so. It's either collected through, when the MS4 permit requirements were put in place by OEP A, the county was, had worked through a steering committee with the City of Cincinnati to identify how we were going to be in compliance with that MS4 permit. And it was determined that there would be a Hamilton County Stormwater District that then passes along the same type of fee structure, or some sort of fee structure through an organization to accomplish the clean water goals of the Hamilton County Stormwater District that was then formed. Once that was formed, individual communities were given the opportunity to elect how they passed along those fees. Some of them absorbed it in the general funds in the beginning. Others passed, they may have passed it along in a parcel. So there may be some communities out there still through the stormwater district that actually do pass it along per parcel. I think there are. Because over the years, with the challenges of budgets since that time, they have had to make decisions to pass more along to the parcels. So I would have to say that that's something that individual communities have had to struggle with over the years.
Okay, and can you walk us through the membership of the stakeholder work group?
Sure. So, excuse me. The stakeholder, we tried to capture anyone who represents large bodies of people or has an expressed interest. So the Chamber of Commerce, obviously, they were represented on the original task force. We thought that, you know, we'd make sure that they continued to be a part of the ongoing efforts with this impervious surface because they, during that task force, agreed that this was something that would really be important to look at. So they're going to be a part of it. They'll choose a representative and we're going to ask each group to choose an alternate so that we can keep the pace going. And we really want to get this finished by June of next year. So, the Chamber, Sierra Club, COFA, I'm going to have to read the list so I don't miss anybody, League of Women Voters, Ohio Valley Development Council, GE, because they're a big, big property owner and user of the system that actually has embarked on their own efforts to tighten up their impervious surface on their site. So they've had some experience with it. COFA, and we have one ad hoc resident rate payer that is yet to be identified, taking all suggestions. So that's something that we thought we needed to include.
I have one last question. So, related then to the makeup. As far as GE now makes sense to me, because that was another one that said, hmm, GE. So I wonder if it would be important to include somebody that, not only who is doing it themselves, and maybe another entity that has large parking lots that is not doing it themselves, that for whatever reason, that might be an important perspective?
I think that's where the Chamber is important.
Oh, okay.
They can choose. And as a matter of fact, the gentleman who represented the Chamber through the rate task force initial effort owns a fairly large industrial facility in lower price hill and has a lot of impervious surface and parking.
Okay. So, and then the last one might be, if we're going to do something that is not only related to capturing costs, but also incentivizing behavior?
Absolutely.
So maybe somebody that has that kind of experience?
Yes.
Well, it could be an architect or someone from the parks?
So that's kind of, yeah.
Something like that.
Right. And we, that's envisioned to be a part of the package when it comes out. And that's kind of, in part, why GE was chosen, because they chose to do it on their own. They recognize the benefits of reducing the size of their oversized parking lot and providing their own protection through green features that they installed. And we also have the Hamilton County Regional Planning, who's been, you know, really instrumental in getting out there and talking about, you know, what you can do on your parking lots to achieve greater capture of stormwater with the planning partnership. So if you have any other suggestions, we definitely are going to bake into this an incentive to allow folks to make choices.
Yeah, just an expert maybe in that field so that we can better flush out what the options are.
The Ohio Valley Development Council does have folks who are in tune to this as well.
Okay, but I'm talking more specifically like a landscape architect or someone that can go in and say, okay, this is how you plant trees in a parking lot, right? Or something like that. So, all right, I'm going to withhold any more questions and start to move it around. So Vice President Dumas?
Madam President, just a few comments as we look at composition. That was one of my concerns, Karen, not concerns, but questions. Lots of reps from different agencies. And I noticed that your asterisk says, "In addition to these members, there may be a need to bring in additional expertise as needed."
Yes.
I think there may be a need to bring in additional common sense as needed
Okay.
as it relates to Hamilton County residents. I see we only have one resident. And I know you probably-
Well, I think COFA would also be considered a resident. And we wanted to make sure that there was a balance.
Yeah, I think they, I understand that, I think they consider themselves a group of residents. But an individual resident who may have the interest, I heard you say, it's been difficult to get the one. And knowing that you probably want odd numbers, it looks like 15 members if I counted correctly, maybe to add two more residents on there, I think would be good.
We are taking, we are taking suggestions. So that's fine. We'll go ahead and add.
Well, I wonder if each office, as we've done in the past, maybe each office recommends an individual resident.
There you go.
We just did that on another task force. And so maybe that's-
That works.
We'll look for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, and I appreciate the great work and the follow through on this incredibly important element of bringing fairness to the rate structure at MSD. So, dating back to everybody who was a part of the original task force around rates, formed in 2015, the parties that were, have been a part of that since then. I always want to play historian a little bit and mention other county commissioners who were involved in this. So through this process, as it unfolded, we had Commissioners Greg Hartman, Chris Mazzell, and Dennis Dietz, who carried this forward and kept the movement forward and the incentive and focus on it. So appreciative of this. This is not a, it's overdue in the sense that we've got to get this part of it dealt with. But the county commission has been very intent on and has been active in bringing fairness, new programs, other things to address the issue of fees at MSD. So beyond all that, Mrs. Ball, you mentioned incentives. Or no, President Drehouse, you talked about incentives. And I wanted to ask, because we've also had a lot of discussion in here about people who are trying to conserve their water use. I know this is impervious surface, but the whole issue of incentivizing better water conservation, is that something that could be brought into this effort? Or is that too much of another big bite? Because this is big enough on its own.
No, I think-
But I just wondered if that's something else that we could really get our arms around?
That's a really good question, because there's two components to the current rate structure that is collected for, from the rate pairs of the system. The first is through their metered fee, okay? The metered charge that they get for their usage. And that is, the lowest they can go is the 3 CCF. So you cannot go any lower than that, which then doesn't incentivize saving water. So with this and the approach that we can, we can do all kinds of analysis during this exercise to see if in doing the, in moving into an impervious surface fee structure, we will be, we will have more flexibility to be able to allow folks to conserve through their normal meter fee. So I, and one of the remaining task force recommendations was to take a look at, you know, once we have the 3 CCF set for a year or so, to see what the burden is then that is covered through the existing revenues. We can take a look at where we can move that number down to.
Okay.
And that then will get you to the answer you're asking.
Okay. That's great. In addition, on the stakeholder groups, or the agency work groups, I should say, not the stakeholders, forgive me. I don't want to lose sight of the important role around water conservation that does include eliminating impervious surfaces. The good work that has been done historically and is still actively addressed by the soil and water district and Conservancy District. And in the course of recommending them for consideration to also note, I was unable to be there last night. President Drehouse, thank you for representing the Board there at their annual meeting last night. But in particular, to pay attention to note and commend the work of outgoing, directly, Holly Uchota-Halkum, whose retirement was, I guess officially, put in play last night at the annual meeting. And she deserves a lot of thanks and recognition for her work in this field as well, especially when it comes to impervious surfaces. And of course, how that all relates to our, the projects that we are required to do under the consent decree as well and green infrastructure, which is eliminating and continuing to eliminate as best we can impervious surfaces throughout all of Hamilton County. And that will reduce the cost of projects as well on rate payers, which is another way to bring fairness to rates, to the people of Hamilton County. And we're in a great position to have that done in a significant way now with respect to the Phase Two project list the county has submitted that has the force of law behind it with the passage of the new legislation in January of this year. That we continue to try to take full advantage of and make sure that EPA understands that that's the will of the county to do that and receive that and accept that. I may have other suggestions. Certainly I'll have one as to a county resident. Vice President Dumas, thank you for that suggestion. Great idea. And if there are other agency work group participants. I think along the line, President Drehouse, of your suggestion of an architect or someone of that nature, we might want to have someone in here relative to construction cost issues also, from the Cincinnati Building Trades or Allied Construction Industries or some balance of the two. Sometimes they see eye to eye, sometimes they don't. But I know you're trying to put together a very balanced group here. So I mentioned both sides of sort of the labor management representation with respect to that element of this. Because there, you know, we all know there will be pushback on this.
Right.
And by having those that are involved in the actual construction side of things, it then takes you to the home builders and, you know, all those folks. We're going to need to have some representation in that field, I believe, as well, to try to touch every angle that we can through the working group in order to ultimately get something that we can adopt and that will work and not have something that we're going to perpetuate what is already now a four-year fight to try to get done.
So this is tracking to be on for Thursday for a vote. I guess begs the question, do you want to take some time to review and think about it and see if there's any more that you would like to add?
I'm sure that you'll be, well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have spoke up so quickly. May I?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sure that even after we adopt this, that you'll still be open to, as you said, in addition, you know, there's going to be a need to continue to be open to-
So no delay, just go ahead.
I wouldn't delay.
Yeah, we'll add what we're taking away from today's meeting for what you'll see on Thursday. And if there's anything else, you know, this is not carved in stone and you obviously have the power to add, delete, or, you know, do whatever you wish with this working group structure. But I do envision that the two groups will work together, will come together at some point so they can, they can really all get their heads wrapped around how literally monumental this is going to end up being and what an important change it is for the fairness and equity of the rate structure that we need to see.
Part of my response to you also this fall was, you know, let's get it going and get the direction set ASAP, is because I'm not going to be able to be at Thursday's meeting.
Oh, okay.
I want to be able to make sure I could still offer suggestions after today if possible.
Okay, got it.
Thanks.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so you got some direction then from us. It's a good look at that. The reason I say the thing about the landscape architect, I was on a board where we were doing, this is a long time ago too, I was on the Cincinnati Recreation Board and we were doing parking lots where we were trying to be more green with our approach. And one of the board members happened to be an architect. And he knew a lot about how to create, you know, spaces for trees or how to create a different kind of surface or how the retention basis, because he was an architect. And I thought, oh man, without him sitting on the board, we would have been at a deficit because we didn't know enough about the field. And this was, gosh, this was 20 years ago at least. So anyway, that's the reason. And I want, I do want to pay particular attention to the incentive piece of this because instead of being just a hammer, I want to also say, if you as a parking lot owner are willing to make some adjustments, then we will account for that and, you know, and try to recognize that forward movement. Is there anything you'd like to add, Director Christie?
Sure.
Sure.
Trying not to take too much time, but thank you for giving me a minute. Yeah, and just generally speaking, I do want to just state that MSD is behind this and supports this effort. And in fact, and we've been talking with Holly and Karen about what, you know, the step you were taking today. So thank you for doing that. And I do just want to, you know, comment, as I know we all know, you know, we feel as though the establishment of an impervious surface fee could go a long way to resolving some of the equities of the rates. But there are, you know, a lot of tough issues we'll have to tackle along the way. And to make sure that this doesn't have a negative impact on, you know, certain areas, certain types of property owners, and things like redevelopment. And it's something that, you know, things can have an unintended consequence, as we saw many years ago with environmental regulations that caused brownfields and the like. We don't want to end up having our property owners flee because they don't want to have a, you know, a parking lot that they can't afford to maintain. So with that, I wholeheartedly agree that the incentive piece of this is a big part of it. And when we talk about representation, you know, MSD would not only like to be a part of this, we would like to be a leader in this. We have experts, we have engineers at MSD that are working on our green infrastructure projects, that are managing our green infrastructure, or designing these things. So not only do we have that expertise in-house, but like to be part of, you know, who else is sitting at the table? Some of the stakeholder work groups, some of the comments that we had in particular, felt that it needed to be a little bit more balanced with retail and business owners. We can help name some groups if the county is interested in that. And then a couple of names that we thought you had mentioned, parks. I also thought, we work a lot with the Cincinnati Zoo and they've done a lot with stormwater capture. So I think it'd be great to have them at the-
Beat me to the punch on that.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
I thought you did.
Yeah, I think they would be great to have at the table if only for their ideas because they're not, they're trying to not have much impervious surface left on their property and to retain all stormwater. So what they're doing is just, is really great and we can model a lot after that. So with that, I think, you know, again, just supportive of this effort and Misty is on board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, appreciate it. All right, well let us, so if we have any further comment noting that this is going to move forward on Thursday, I assume you would like those comments pretty soon, if there are any in addition to what we've said here this afternoon. So let's say by end of day, something like that, to give you time.
I'll go ahead and get back there and add what I heard today to the list and then shoot that out and then any additions that you feel are necessary at this time is fine. And as for the zoo, Mark Fisher with the zoo was one of the first people that I met with when I went into MSD for the county. And he just completely embraced the challenge and ran with it in a beautiful way at the Cincinnati Zoo. And we partnered with them in the beginning when we had the demonstration program early on, 2007 to 2009. And I'm really proud of what they were able to accomplish there and the partnerships that all came together with USGS and EPA and all the folks that had to come together to get the data we needed to prove that this can work for the incentives.
Madam President?
Yes.
And on that point, what the zoo brought, which was invaluable, and I'm going to expand on what you just said Karen, was by embracing it. And they've used it in so many different ways that have made them money, have-
Saved them money?
Saved them money, have, you know, reduced, you know, reused, recycled at the zoo. All those things that whatever the added cost was to doing what they had to do to meet the goals that were established, they made back and then some. And they found in doing so, it could help them in other ways that they ran the zoo. And so it's just been this great thing that they continue to involve. And now they, every time I hear Mark talk or Thane Maynard or whatever, they always close it by saying the greenest zoo in North America, you know, that kind of a thing. And it's kind of a part of their brand now. And that helps tremendously.
Absolutely.
So I share that so that those who are, as Interim Director Christie correctly pointed out, you know, we have to make sure it's balanced and that any concerns people might have going into this, we're able to meet. But my gosh, you know, when you have a party to, at the table on this, like the zoo, that did embrace it and they were constantly looking for ways that they could expand it to help them out as well as meet the goals and the objectives, it was wonderful. And still is wonderful, what they're doing over there at the zoo. So thank you for bringing that up, yeah.
Thank you. And one other thing, so I've taken notes and I'm happy to share them with you. But Diana mentioned something that I think is important. So we've talked about GE with large surface parking lots. I talked about others that have not yet done anything with large parking lots. It will be important, I think, to have people with small parking lots, small business owners that have a very different looking balance sheet than GE does. And try to figure out if there's a distinction between an incentive for GE or Kroger or Walmart and an incentive for the dry cleaner down the street, right? So I am going to make an additional suggestion that a small business owner, and I know the Chamber of Commerce is on there, I don't know if we would be guaranteed that-
Gotcha.
-through the Chamber. But it makes sure that we have both large business owners and small business owners represented on the stakeholder group.
Great. We are asking for alternates, so, you know, we'll take two suggestions if you have.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we don't miss that, like the neighborhood business district piece.
Right.
And make sure they're in the loop as well. And I did count out then the- And I, I did count out then, and the city is represented through a couple of the members in the agency work group, as, as the county. So, just do want to note that. All right. Well, very good. Well, thank you for this, and we'll look forward to getting this underway. All right. That is all we have on our regular agenda. Is there anything else before I make a motion for executive session?
I have nothing. Only to say, Madam President, that there, there may be an item that I will prepare, have submitted to your office for consideration of, just seeing that it's formally introduced at, at Thursday's meeting, if we could, just related to, because it's a, it's a work, it's a board meeting, and I won't have an opportunity of a by leave.
Oh, okay.
Because I'm not going to be there.
Right.
So, that's all.
Okay.
Just wanted to head, highlight that. Yeah, that's all.
And I expect that the Hamilton County Fair Resolution will also be in front of us on Thursday. We did, we heard back from the Ag Society, and we've got both of you representatives too. So, I am pretty sure we're ready to go on that. So, we'll have a couple of by-leave resolutions.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. With that, I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning the subject pending litigation.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. He wanted to say something?
Karen?
Uh, no. No, we're good. Yeah, we're good. It was just a sidebar conversation.